They have to get a permit.
We're still gonna get permission from the cellular company.
Thank you. Also with the Grange Hall, we met with the new propane company we'll be dealing with now, which is Dead River. And we've made arrangements to have the Grange Hall propane tank placed on the fire department side of the parking lot, which will free up two to three parking spaces behind the Grange Hall, which I think will be very valuable. And it's going in the green space that we didn't utilize anyways. I think it's a win-win. In return, the theater groups will allow us to use the facility as an emergency facility, like during the hurricane, and which will be great. It'll give us a lot more space than we have now. And they're also gonna tie into our emergency generator, so it'll have standby power. So I think it's a win-win for both them and us, and it'll make a better usage of both properties. If you drove up through Main Street tonight, you'll notice there's a lot of fire apparatus downtown. That is part of the basic fire school. This year, we haven't been hosting it because we have a building that we could utilize. It's over the Woolworth State. It's the old caretaker's property on Twin View Drive. And the owner has donated to us for fire training, and then in the fall or early winter, we're gonna burn it down. It's right by that big cow barn that's in behind it. This Friday night, the Friday fireman's gonna be standing by. I believe it's homecoming. They're gonna have a bonfire at the high school, and hopefully the rain will hold off. But we'll be up there with them, and they're gonna celebrate that. We talked about a month ago about the new fireworks law. We have had some questions about putting a fireworks store here in town. It's very preliminary, but the people decided to ask the questions. Luckily, where they're talking about is not in the downtown area. It's on the outskirts, which will be good, but as you can see, we're kind of in the middle of several big communities, and it'd be a great location from what these people feel. And that's all I have. Do you have any questions? Thank you.
Thank you. Kevin?
Let's see. Training. I'm sending my three full-time officers. Two went today, one's gonna be going tomorrow down to Auburn for firearms training. They've already had firearms training this year, have qualified, but what Auburn introduces also is more of a tactical kind of shoot, sort of situations they put you in, what do you shoot, don't shoot, stuff like that. So I felt that was very beneficial for them. I went to training yesterday, fulfilled all my mandatory training for this year. The officers will be doing that in the very near future. Let's see. Also, if you check the Monmouth website, you'll see, if you go to Survey Monkey, you will see something like that. It's...I've only been here six months, but you know, I'd still like to know what's going on, what do you think I can improve upon? So it's just five questions. You go to the Monmouth website, and all you have to do is hit the survey. And like I said, it's five questions, it's gonna be really simple. And so what data I gathered from that, I'll go from there.
You say one of those ones?
What's that?
You vote one of those ones?
Yeah, you can vote one of those. Yeah, early and often. Also, I've been going over the numbers, the crime stats essentially, for last year and this year. And basically, what we're at is, that's the 2010 crime stats, and that's 2011. Well, what those statistics are is, those are the Part I crimes that get reported to the state and federal government. And what those are is murder, rape, robbery, assault, which also includes domestics, burglaries, larceny thefts, motor vehicle thefts. I was looking at those, and last year, let's see, there were ninety-eight reported Part I crimes. Now, that may not seem like much, but you also gotta figure in too, right now, we're at two thousand calls for service. So you figure in that, you figure in one officer working the road, period, then you gotta figure in the investigation times and stuff like that. So they remain fairly busy through the whole time. Last year, we had a clearance rate of forty-four, forty-five point nine percent. This year, so far, we're at fifty-four point four percent. So over half the crimes that get reported for Part I crimes, that getting solved. So that's, the national average is, I would have to guess around thirty-six, if I remember right. So we're doing, at least, I commend my officers for doing a good job. So that's about it.
How does this compare to state average?
State average is about thirty-six.
So it's lower?
No, we're higher, for solvability rates, yes.
When you said two thousand calls for service, that's this year?
Yeah, that's where we're at this year. Which, figuring, I figured out the number of days we've had so far this year, that's about eight calls per day.
And how many were last year?
How many last year? Calls for service, I don't know. Yep.
Last week, we worked with the P O T, that catch basin on Maple Street, it was a light tone. We volunteered our backhoe to dig the basin out and state reset it, the page at the end of the week, called very nice. That's a very nice call. Just the one just below the post office. And we also, last week, worked with Pan Am Railway on putting new rail across Main Street. So we had to do all signing to get traffic around Main Street, which is not an easy feat, and I had to keep a man stationed right out here. There you go, one, two, two intersection, we got everybody coming here, not knowing where to go, so I thought it went well. It was quite a survey before it finished that night, but we got it done, the worst part, the crossing got wrapped up again, so I'm out, I'm out, it was just a pasture that they're gonna see if they can throw it up a little bit more. And if you probably noticed, we've got the flag up on Main Street, we put up religion for African festivals, probably taken it out next week. And the last thing I have, we got our annual fuel assistance golf tournament going on two weeks from Friday. I gave Harold one, because he's a golfer, but I'll leave some of these around. I've contacted a lot of businesses in town. Sixty dollars per business advertised per day. All money that goes into that comes back to the town for the system. And we've got quite a lot raised already, so it's all made together, we're gonna be happy to...
Okay.
Thank you. That's all I have.
Yes, Mr. Chairman, just a couple things. The, just want you to know, you probably read that there's a state election on November eighth, but there's a change here because the state passed a law this past year that requires municipalities with population over five hundred to have holes open longer. They went from six A M. to eight A M., and we traditionally opened at nine, we have to open earlier. I suggest that we open at eight o'clock, we think that would work. Eight A is pretty common. Some municipalities open earlier, but we think eight will work, if that's okay with you. And absentee ballots are available October sixth, if we really miss one, we have. If the landlord, no objection, we'll proceed with eight o'clock. They also have the municipal association meeting in October fifth and sixth, fifth being a meeting night here, but if the board wouldn't like to sign that document, let me know, please, so we can sign up at the deadline, do that. And I don't know if you've seen a brochure on the subject, or if there's sellouts of interest to elected and appointed officials all days. We'll be closing on Wednesday, one day, so all staff will go, this is something that is incredible. But I'll be back for that, I'll be here that night. But if you do want to sign up to sort of know, or if you don't have the information in possession, give me a call sometime, I can do that. And also, the municipal association, we have robust compensation and property viability coverage through municipal association, and we've been members for a long time, and we have a dividend that's just been given this year of five thousand two hundred and fifty-three dollars. The association has been formed since nineteen seventy-eight. We currently have, as I said, robust compensation and unemployment compensation and property casualty. The dividend is for property casualty and unemployment, and it's about seven percent of our, or the current annual seventy thousand in revenues, so fifty-four, five thousand four hundred and fifty-three is about seven percent. It's last year's money, they, that's a nonprofit, and they finally get one number, they're giving one for one million, for example, I think they have a lot of municipalities involved, so, but it's good news because for a couple years, we weren't getting any dividend for robust compensation, we had an injury that was expensive, and now we're finally in a black and a premonition. Thank you.
Next item on the agenda is CDGB grant or grant?
Yes, the four hundred thousand dollars that we got recently notified for a grant is, is Dave here? I'll let him talk about, we'll have that town even approve for that, and one of the things we have in front of you is a warrant, which Dave has drafted, and this is a talk of the previous grant we got, four hundred thousand, so this would have been the project we were very lucky to get approved. I think there were thirty-something applications, and less than half were approved, quite competitive, more than we were. We scored very well, and I think we have a wonderful project, so we need structure, and we need partnership, at least. I'll leave you to talk about it.
Sure. I'm Dave Green, from the Theater of Monmouth. And as Tom Manager said, we were ranked third out of thirty-two applicants, I think, for projects, and we're one of only four or five that were fully funded through a program called the Communities for Main's Futures Program, which was specifically targeted at Maine communities that were, you know, had projects sort of close to the main street. And interestingly, the Lewiston and Portland and I think Biddeford and some of the other cities did not score as well. Almost all of the award grants were in more rural communities. The local ones to receive the award, Monmouth, and then also Winthrop is getting a new slate route for the library. But what this project will do is allow us to completely finish the Grange, and so by next spring, not only will it be renovated and fully handicap accessible, but it also, as Andre and David said, it'll also be eligible to be an emergency facility if the need arises, so that there'll be a good kitchen that can put out a lot of meals if those are needed. There'll be, there's a handicap accessible shower that's on, that'll be on the first floor, and of course, the partnership with the Fire Department to be able to have it work off of that generator. In fact, just today, I've got the list of items that will be operated if the generator is used, and we've preliminarily approved that, and so consequently, we'll move forward with that. It's been a huge project. I've never actually been involved with a project like this, but it's, moving the building back and then moving on the foundation is terrific. It'll be, the only thing, the only part of it that we still have to sort of figure out about the bidding process is that, is that we have to put the elevator out to bid, but we'll have an elevator, the specs are already there, a hole is there for it, so, but everything else is already out to bid, so we don't even have to go through the full bid process. We'll be able to use the contract that we already have, which is crapots, which is open from Ludmore Falls, and they were the competitive low bid for the previous part of the project. So I'm happy to answer any questions that you have.
Well, I just wanted to say something. I know you put a tremendous amount of work in the day, and I wanted to thank you for all your efforts.
It's really been wonderful, and I must say, this is my, this is actually my last couple of weeks at the Theater of Monmouth, as the director of the Theater of Monmouth, although I'm going to stay with the Grange renovation project through the year, and I have, I've been sort of nostalgic about fourteen years ago when I got here, and was remembering just the other day about the old days when we used to have to, whenever somebody in a wheelchair came to see a play at Compton Hall, I had to go in the dressing room and get guys to help carry the wheelchair up the fire escape, the outside metal fire escape, and we're gonna get them in there. So Compton Hall is now almost completely done with its renovations. We're gonna renovate the Grange. Next, we're gonna work on Toad Hall. I hope at some point, we're gonna be able to do a full project that will involve a museum, and even the sides and sidewalks, and I think we can make Monmouth the destination that everybody agreed to the goal to be when they did the last downtown plan. So I think there's still a lot of work to be done, but we're chipping away a little bit, so this is another step I'm really happy about. And I thank you guys for your support all the way through.
Now, Mr. Chairman, we'll have to have an article approved for the town meeting, which I understand we're considering putting on more for the November election. And we've prepared a draft article for you to approve, it has to be approved this evening. So, if you want to read it, click out, read it up, it says, "Shall Town of Monmouth go to accept Communities for Main's Future Program grant fund in the amount of four hundred thousand dollars for the purposes of partnering with the Theater of Monmouth, a non-profit corporation, to complete renovations and full accessibility upgrades to the former Monmouth Grange Hall at no cost to the Town of Monmouth, and to make such assurances, assume such responsibilities, exercise such ability as are necessary and reasonable to implement such programs. Furthermore, the Town of Monmouth is cognizant of the requirement that should intended cash objective of the CDGB program, not the net. All CDGB funds must be retained in the state of main CDGB program." Could you explain, Dave, what that means by not net objective?
Well, I'm not entirely certain how it's possible to not meet your obligation, because they don't give you any of the money until you prove that you've done the work you do. And so every month, we have a meeting, but there are, this project actually gets double looks because it also involves the USDA Rural Development Program. So RD has to sign off on it, as well as the Community Development Block Grant Program at the Department of Economic and Community Development. So there's two levels, plus the local level of oversight. So I'm not sure what, you know, maybe somewhere they're buying a yacht with their money, but I don't think it's possible. So the oversight is tremendous, but what it's basically saying is, if for some reason we decide that instead of taking this money and working to finish the Grange project, and instead we give it to the school district, that then we would still be liable for it. So I'd recommend not do that.
I'm over with what you're asking, I'm watching. Good. All is in favor?
All. Thank you, all.
Thank you. Next thing on the agenda is, the planning board recommended amendments to the Comprehensive Development Shoreland zoning ordinances.
Yeah, Mr. Chairman, there are two questions that the planning board proposed, the amendments. One of them is simply to change the language from ninety days to, from thirty days to ninety days for the purposes of filing the recording subdivision plan. Dave is here, if there are questions about that, it's a common problem, I guess, we're supposed to be sort of...
Actually, it's to change from ninety to thirty, isn't it?
It's right on.
It's that way, right?
Yeah.
It's to change it from thirty to ninety.
Yeah. That's why we're doing this together, right?
So that's what it is, it's thirty days now, and we want it to...
The state changed their ways of doing it, and changed their law to ninety. We're changing it to ninety to meet the state.
It does, it is correct in a section that's intended to be adopted, which is spelled out as within thirty days, but in the preceding paragraph, it says, the purpose of changing the time period from ninety to thirty days, it should be from thirty to ninety, right? Exactly. Let's see if that's changed. Maybe the lawyers get it to that.
So the five-two-two-one-one is the language as it exists now?
The five-two-two-one-one in the first paragraph is currently ninety, it's thirty days, and it's being changed to what's said in, so the amended orders will provide thirty days.
Ninety days.
Yeah, okay, I gotta make sure this is correct.
Subdivision plan.
We're just bringing it up to the state standard.
Which is to change from...
Thirty days, well, they changed, they, I don't know what they had it, but they, it is now ninety days at the state level. You have ninety days to file with the Registry of Needs your approved plan from the date it's approved. It has to be filed within ninety days. We had it in our development ordinance as thirty.
Okay, so the paragraph below the question is the way it reads currently, and the question needs to be changed exactly flipped from the way it states right now.
Yeah.
So the question, instead of reading as it does now, shall Town go to section five-two-two-eleven of Town, of Town of Monmouth Comprehensive Development Ordinance by deleting the phrase ninety days? That needs to be changed to deleting the phrase thirty days.
Just backwards.
And replacing that language with ninety days for the purpose of changing the time period for recording subdivision plan from thirty days to ninety days, so that the amended ordinance will provide...
Just backwards.
Okay.
Totally backwards. I'll get the changes. It's just, it's all there, it's all backwards. Even the lawyer puts it out. I'm glad you read it, it's good. But these, so you'll need to vote who will put that on the ballot.
I'm over with putting it on the ballot as amended.
Amended.
Sorry? All is in favor?
Now, the second question was, they wanted to add a couple of things to the Shoreland zoning ordinance, which would make it more clear their authority to allow people to have setbacks changed from the normal required setback of fifty, forty feet to twenty-five feet. Basically, that's what that does. It's less restrictive.
Setback from where?
It would read, the rest of the section would read from twenty-five feet to the edge of the roadway, forty feet from the set line of the roadway, or situations where either, do you see the language at all?
No, I haven't, because it's one of the problems we have on the Board of Appeals, since everybody's coming in Shore Island zoning, wanting foot barges up against the road.
The, Dave can explain this too. They have this regular problem of situations where you normally want to allow, keep with the neighborhood practice, no technical limits on the way, you want to preserve as much setback in length as possible, but that means you need to move towards the road, but if you can't do it, then everybody gets an upward. So this allows more clarity as to what you can allow.
Absolutely. The planning board should do it, because it's improvement. All the training we get when we go on boards of appeals is, if you're having constant appeals on a type of setback, you want to evaluate changes in the ordinance. If we're getting constant appeals, particularly in Shoreland zoning on private roads, the people want the stick barges up there, while in the center of town, we allow twenty-five feet from the edge of the road. There's a reason for that, but down on private roads, you know, well...
It's a mess, right?
Yeah, it's a mess down there. We ought to be able to be consistent, if nothing else.
So you agree with that?
Yeah, I think that twenty-five feet is not unreasonable, because some of the areas are given violations of law.
We've also scheduled the town attorney to meet with the Board of Appeals next month to go over the various appeals process, because that itself has become complicated, because you have to be a lawyer to sometimes understand the variance process to apply it, it shouldn't have to be, but some tutorial, discussion of case law, and those kinds of applications and reports, so the appeals board has requested some assistance from the town attorney, which we're trying to provide. But this will help a lot, because as it points out, it's been a problem for the...
Well, a big problem for Board of Appeals, I mean, it looks up with the ordinances. Everybody else just sits there, listens, and nobody's got a copy of the ordinance, and they're specific, they're in the state law, the Monmouth ordinance issued to the grant appeals. There are a number of violations of state law and Monmouth ordinance for some of the granting of appeals. I'm glad we've kept the town attorney, however, the municipal recommends the Board of Appeals have its own there, because there are times for towns to boards of appeals. So certainly hope that doesn't happen here, but there are times for towns to boards of appeals.
Yeah, we let those come up and do that. Right.
Since we've adopted our latest ordinance, the planning board has brought this issue up for discussion numerous times, and recent application kind of brought us what I had, that this application decided I'll be made, and even bouncing around and bouncing around, that's why you're facing it at this point in time. Our ordinance says a fifty-foot setback to the height of the set system, it's just best about a public, a private road.
So I think maybe when the ordinance gets reviewed, we're gonna have to look at that, but it's time, Dave, when he, you know, the college is there among the, this twenty-five foot setback isn't much, it really is. So hopefully you move forward.
Planning board discussed this at great length, can I take it?
At great length. The planning board's resolve is quite simple. Their resolve is to give the most setback to any waterway that they possibly can, and in doing so, it will, by reducing this to twenty-five feet, will allow them to, in fifty or sixty percent of the cases, make it a legal setback from a waterway, which is what we're shooting for.
I'm over with putting the question on the board. Sorry? All is in favor?
Now, we're planning a public hearing, in the commission, a public hearing for several artists here. We have to have a public hearing, well, we warrant you to sign for these, that you're next, being number five, but means I'm gonna plan a public hearing for the nineteenth. We have a long time to give publications, whatever we do agree to, and the nineteenth is a good beginning, so I don't think any of these will generate a large, which we know you have the ninety minutes, but if there are important issues to solve, the sooner the better, but they're not divisive, they're all solutions, so you're not like, it's need a bigger venue for them. So if you're agreeable, we'll let you go.
Awesome. Next item on the agenda is... The next item on the agenda is, hold on, isn't there one more? What's this word with here?
There's a couple more. There are these, they're all late. I just stuck them together. They're on the agenda.
All right.
Sorry. Should have paid the public.
So the next item on the agenda, public comments.
Told you I'd be good about that. Two or three things. First, I'd like to start out with some positive and thank Kirby today for taking care of the puddles going down the athletic field. Really discouraged with the problems with the RSU maintaining our facilities, particularly the athletic. Last two days, we're close to five hundred people there every day, and there's going on. You can't set up on the hillside, it's all broken, and Brian Goucher came up last night, bush hogged it. Can't get a decent car down in and out of there because of the potholes, so I went and asked Kirby, and I offered a favor, if there's a charge, I'll pay it, to fill in a couple of potholes there. That field is used also by Parks and Recreation, and I think they ought to accept some responsibility for it. That road going down in there needs a complete repave. And it should be taken here. We can argue over RSU or anything else. Everybody here, I think, goes, "My, man, you can hell out, call another green, that's okay."
Which road, is this, which field are you talking about?
The Academy Field, High School one, so we're down in. Kirby did the presentation on today, I don't, and there's a charge, all you know, and I pay it, because I'm tired of listening to people, BP and M, so I decided to get something done, get the bush hogging done, so people today, the cross-country people could run up on the top of the hill instead of this way on the hillside, and people could set up there and such, and people could get their cars up at that. So that's my compliment to Kirby. But my complaint, I'm not gonna be able to stay for the rest of it, because I had a proceeding today that's killing me, and I also got work tomorrow, starting at four o'clock in the morning, I don't have my manifest yet, that takes me three hours to prepare my manifest, so I don't need you. Recalled witness. Leave it alone unless you get a correct petition. And recalling a public official should be a hard process. It shouldn't be Ed gets POed, goes out, gets a bunch of his buddies, and comes in here and wants to throw somebody out. You have a recall every three years, you have no action. How easy do you throw someone out of the legislature, unless they beat somebody with a gun about W. Davis Park or what? You can't. So I think you should be left to vote. People are unhappy. There is a petition process, which you have to do it, but they don't and correct. Things like this are, you know, I go around town looking for things that improve, make the town better. I don't go around looking, "How can I complain all the time? How can I pick, how can I..." Tim and I don't see eye to eye on a lot of things, I don't come down to you, I don't come down to you two about it. We just don't see eye to eye. That's our right. That's our right. Leave it alone. I don't know anything about what the park would consider, but I saw Monmouth at the best the last two weekends. Fundraisers for two people with serious health injuries. That was Monmouth at the best, the way Monmouth used to bait, when people got together and helped each other and didn't try to destroy things. Unfortunately, it felt kind of bad, because the town fathers, I saw there inside, was done. I think kind of sometimes you have to pay attention to these things, because it's the perception the town has of you folks. And honestly, the perception of you folks sometimes is much better than that of others. And that's too bad, because I think you won't mean one if they keep trying hard. But at least, I'm not gonna be able to say what recalls they sent, I'd rather get home than get very, very far. But I say, leave it alone unless somebody comes in here, put a correct new word in petition. And it should only be voted on at the annual town meeting and change the ordinance, when you get a good turnout. People try to sneak something in, off-time elections, when there aren't much of a turnout, that the annual town meeting is good turnout. That's all I have to say. Thank you. And I didn't do you too hard to that town. I very much appreciate it, and thank you.
Hunter Rice, on that road, is that part of the property that was due to the RSU's responsibility, or is that one of the roads?
No, that's not school property on there.
So that really is RSU property then?
Oh, yeah.
So they should be addressing that issue then?
Oh, yeah. It's been horrible for years.
Yeah, it's really neat. Although, no, I'm not gonna take away from the RSU, but Monmouth never fixed it either, but we had responsibility for it, so.
I just wanted to know if it was town property or the due property.
No, that was part of the field, if I'm not mistaken, that was part of the field that was due by the checks to the, to the high school, well, to the Monmouth cabin.
So the road that, and we're talking about, you mean to be fixed, that is on?
It was a big steep hill, too.
Yeah, yeah, so that road, you know, be, okay. And that's RSU property?
Yeah.
Okay. Thank you.
And the field all the way around used to be, right, the public, like, the south end of the field, by the baseball, it was rolling in to the diodes and such, and you said that just a simple bush hogging, take that back, and such, and stuff's not being done like that. Field was just rolling in, rolling in, rolling in all the time.
Mr. Chair, the tennis courts also, and being able to, as far as running the green, I think?
Yes. That's my guess.
I thought the tennis courts cannot be built over, they were only water. I thought the tennis courts were a different situation.
I don't think so. I don't think they were screwed, they were just, your own school's problem, your school problem.
I thought that they were something in.
We initially, as I looked at the tennis courts, we thought, build a federal monument, they were not, they were built with only five hundred feet of ground.